I wish you say in the statement.
What statement?
The beginning statement.
Thirty seconds?
She loves doing that, you know what? She loves it.
My daughter's dog is killing me, like my allergies are just, I woke up with such sinus headache this morning and I'm looking at her going. Double whammy. She's an American Bulldog, for as far as we know, she was a rescue, so.
Who you got a bulldog?
My daughter, but we're watching her and she sheds, like nobody's business and my allergies, usually like by the fourth day they're like done with me. Good. That sounds, that sounds about right. Good for you. We ask for the courtesy of the board members, staff and members of the public that you please silence your cell phones. Good morning and welcome to Orange County School Board's Rule Development Workshop for Thursday, May 9th, 2024. The Rule Development Workshop has been scheduled today for the purpose of discussing proposed revisions to the following policies. One, School Board Policy JLC, Student Health Services and Requirements. School Board Policy JLCD, Medicines Administering Medicines to Students. School Board Policy JLCE, First Aid and Emergency Medical Care. School Board Policy JIK, Threats. And School Board Policy IK, A Grading Systems. During this Rule Development Workshop, the School Board welcomes public comments on the proposed revisions to the aforementioned School Board Policies. Because this is not a regularly scheduled School Board Meeting, there will be no non-agenda public comment period in which the public normally addresses the School Board on topics that are not related to the work of the Board. Should you wish to address the School Board on another topic, please do so at the next regularly scheduled School Board Meeting. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Board members are intending in person and, and on the, on the phone, except for Chair Jacobs, who is unable to attend this meeting. So let's do a quick roll call because we do have two Board Members calling in. Member Salamanca, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Member Frant? Here. Member Gold?
Present, good morning.
Member Felder?
Top of the day, I'm here.
Member Dr. Castor Dental?
Good morning.
Member Bird?
Good morning.
All right, I want to remind the public that Board Members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meetings, so we can focus on the meeting itself, giving our attention to the matters immediately before us. Should you want to contact us, please continue to do so before or after each meeting. To my fellow Board Members and District Staff, when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it, so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Now we are going to do a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Enough for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first, I'll send it over to Superintendent Vasquez.
Thank you, we will begin this morning with Policy JLC, Student Health Services and Requirements. We will hear from Sylvia Schaefer and Mr. Ian Gesundheit, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Schaefer.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members and Superintendent Vasquez. I am Dr. Sylvia Schaefer, Senior Director for ESE Health Services. Today, the policies being presented at Rule Development are JLC, JLCD, JLCE, JIK and IK. Today's agenda is a review of the Tentative Schedule, Summary of Actions, Proposed Revisions, Next Steps and Questions and Discussions. The Tentative Schedule is as follows, the Cabinet Meeting was completed on March 4th, Work Sessions on March 14th and March 26th, the Rule Development Workshop is occurring today, May 9th, Board Approval, May 28th, and the effective date will be determined upon Approval. Now we will review JLC, Student Health Services and Requirements. Proposed revisions to Policy JLC, including requiring written permission from the parent legal guardian for any screening and updating the reporting requirements to the Florida Department of Health in Orange County. Additional proposed revisions made to the existing policy language to include content, formatting, terminology edits, consistent with statutory and rule language. In Student Illness Section 1, the wording is changed from "removed" to "sent." Remove may have a negative connotation versus sent home implies the student is now with the parent or guardian. In Section 2 of Student Illness, the wording is changed to reflect the correct name of Florida Department of Health in Orange County and to follow the established protocol. Also in Section 2 of Student Illness, OCPS Health Services will provide guidance to the school following current procedures where Health Services collaborates with other OCPS Departments and Florida Department of Health in Orange County, as needed, to provide schools with comprehensive guidance when managing communicable diseases. Under Student Guideline Procedures Concerning Human Immunodeficiency Virus, Sections 1 and 2, the wording has been changed to include students who may be infected by other communicable diseases, not limiting the policy to AIDS and HIV. The word "and" was added to address that either the superintendent or designee shall be the district spokesperson. In Section 3, the pronouns he and she have been removed and replaced with the student. Positive was added to address a confirmed and documented communicable disease. Designee was added to address any situations that may occur when the principal is off campus. Under School Health Services, Section 1 has been changed to correctly identify Florida Department of Health in Orange County by its proper name. In Section 2, designee was added to address situations that may occur when the principal is off campus. Written permission from the parent legal guardian is required for any screening has also been added to reflect the parental bill of rights. This concludes revisions for Policy JLC.
Thank you, Mrs. Invall, do we have anybody who wishes to address the Board? All right, do we have any questions from any of our Board Members? Member Frant?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just had some questions, I know I've been speaking with our legal team regarding the administration of medications and, and whatnot, so I don't know if this is the correct, this would be it, or further down, but just wanting to make sure that what, though, it, it sounds like we have the proceed, the, the policy in place, the policy states that we do have to have parental permission. And so maybe questions, and I don't know if this is the time or later on, to ask more about the procedures and how that is put in place and just to ensure that student safety, we're identifying the right students, being given the medications or vaccines during our vaccine clinics. And so I don't know if now is the correct time or later on.
So for student medications, all those medications are brought to the clinic by the parent and the child is there. So those are all signed in directly into the clinic by the parent. As far as for vaccinations, the students come to the vaccine event with their consent form in hand and the vendor verifies who the child is.
Do you know how the vendor verifies the child, is that through like a photo ID or?
On the consent form, it has the student name and date of birth and they verify that. But we have put changes in place for next year.
Okay.
So that students in pre-K through first grade will come with a sticker as well, no sticker, no vaccine.
Perfect, so the sticker would state their name.
Date of birth.
Date of birth.
And they have the consent, correct.
Perfect, okay, that is very helpful. And then when, uh, let's say the students go in and they're going to the clinic, they have to get medications, and there's a substitute nurse, how does that nurse verify that the student is who they are?
School staff verifies who the student is upon entering the clinic and also most of the time ESE students are escorted by an adult on campus as well.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it. No problem.
Thank you, Member Frant.
The next policy to review is JLCD, Medicines Administering Medicines to Students.
Can we just hang on for one, one second, how are the, Member Bird and Member Salamanca, if they have questions, who, who are they contacting? So that we can hear them, just so I know the process, I don't, I want to make sure we don't miss if they have questions. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Proposed revisions to Policy JLCD include renaming the policy to Student Medications, updating the requirements for medications to be administered to students during school hours, and adding medication to relieve headaches and topical sunscreen as permitted items for students to possess and use on school property in accordance with Section 1002.20 Florida statutes. Additional proposed revisions made to the existing policy language to include content, formatting and terminology edits with statutory language. The name of the policy has been changed to Student Medications. In Section 1, the wording has been added to clarify that it is expectation each school has two additional backup clinic staff trained to have the ability to provide services to students in the event of absent staff members. Section 2 wording has been added to clarify that when possible, outside of school hours, a parent or legal guardian shall administer medication to the student. Section 4 wording has been added to clarify that a parent legal guardian shall bring the medication to the clinic. It cannot be sent in a backpack or with a sibling, as the parent legal guardian must complete and sign paperwork for the medication. Section 4 has been changed to clarify that medications used by a student while on campus or while away from school property on official school business. The medication shall be delivered to the clinic by parent legal guardian with the information provided by the medical provider, to include the wording under 4B. This clarifies that the school will follow guidelines for medication administration provided by the student's medical provider. Section 6, the wording has been changed to address that no expired medications shall be accepted, administered or stored in OCPS school clinics, to include over the counter and prescription medications. Under Section 9, designee has been added to address situations that may occur when the principal is off campus. Section 12 has been added to the policy to address Florida Statute 1002.20, which states the following, "A student may possess and use a medication to relieve headaches while on school property or at a school-sponsored event or activity without a physician's note or prescription if the medication is regulated by the United States Food and Drug Administration or over the counter used to treat headaches." Under Florida statute, students may also possess and use topical sunscreens while on school property or at a school-sponsored event. Under the administration of medical marijuana to students during school hours, the only change is to number 3 where the actual number 3 has been added next to the written 3. This concludes revisions for Policy JLCD.
Mrs. Invall, do we have anybody who wishes to address the Board?
Perfect, um, we do have questions from the Board, Dr. Castor Dental.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I have a question about the part, I guess, Section 12, allowing students to possess and use headache medicine. I've had parents who have questions about that and I wasn't able to clarify, so hopefully you can, but they were concerned about kindergartners coming to school with Tylenol and what, how this policy applies? Or are kids allowed to go to the clinic to get headache medicine now? Or is that, do, do nurses no longer have that ability to give kids Advil with parent approval, do you know?
Parents still do have the option to sign in medications into the clinic if they do not feel comfortable with their child self-carrying the medication, but Florida statute does allow all students to self-carry it.
Okay, so, um, is this to remove a punishment of, for students who had, had, who might have had Tylenol or something like that? In the past?
I don't, sorry, Madam Chair, I don't, the, the legislature actually changed. It, it may have been in the past when we didn't allow students to carry a cadre of self-medication, you know, like Tylenol or whatever. I, it was probably in response to that, I'm thinking, because the same thing held true for sunscreen. So that's why this statute was enacted to allow both headache medication and sunscreen.
Okay, thank you, so then our, our regular policy of kids coming to the nurses, see the nurse, doesn't preclude them from getting headache medicine? If they've already brought it and it's in the, okay. So that still applies, it's that same policy that we've had? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
When answering the Board, can you please speak into the mic, because our people who are, our Board Members who are listening can't, okay, can't see you shake your head. So I have a question in reference to like the Tylenol. Does it have to be, like if a child shows up and has like Tylenol, Tylenol or Advil in a baggie, in a Ziploc bag? Is that acceptable, or are we saying it needs to be in like a Tylenol, a Tylenol bottle, so we know it's Tylenol or Advil bottle? Like how, how do we regulate and know what's in a bag? Because they could just say, well, it's Tylenol, how do we, and if it's generic Tylenol, it's not going to say Tylenol on it. So how do we verify that it is, it is in fact Tylenol or Advil?
So at this time, per Florida statute, anything they say is for headaches, they can carry?
Okay, do we have any policies that in play, in place that would allow, if we suspect that it's not for headaches, that we could test it or do anything, like do we have a policy?
The Code of Student Conduct allows us, if we suspect that a child has, well, that has contraband or that has things that are not allowed on campus such as medication, we have the ability to then further investigate and if we find that the child is not carrying what we believe to be Tylenol, it is indeed something else and we will follow through with the Code of Conduct and the consequences for that.
Thank you for that, Dr. Vasquez, should we, I'm just wondering, should there be something in this policy that says that you still have to adhere to the student code of conduct in carrying medication that's used for headaches? Just so that we're clear, that this policy dictates that it will revert back to the student code of conduct? Or is that overkill and we don't need to put that in policy?
If I may, I think that's, that's, every student is required to follow our Code of Student Conduct anyway. And so I think that would fall under contraband, I have some Code of Student Conduct people here. Not sure if they have had that situation, I'm, I'm envisioning a student who might have a baggie full of multiple headache medicine. Like I know I take the blue ones if I need a longer, you know what I mean, so I have a bunch of them in my purse, right? So I think that's what you're asking, is if a student comes in with a cadre of, sorry, I had to use that word, a cadre of medication, what would happen in that case? I would imagine at the school-based level, they probably would take a look at it and go, what, what, what's going on here? You know, and if, if it is concerning, I think they would probably involve the parents and then follow what any Code of Student Conduct action that might need to occur.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Invall, and I think that this is a good policy, like kids should be allowed to take headache medicine, especially in, in middle school and high school and it, it shouldn't be overly regulated. I just want to ensure that for those students who will take it maybe a step too far, that there's parameters in place. Member Salamanca?
Thank you, Chair, so I, I understand the kind of logic behind the headache medication. Is there other medication that's over the counter that we allow, like Tums? Like some of the more, like some students sometimes just have some of the very basic counter, is it very just specific to this?
The statute is very specific to headache medication and sunscreen.
Do we have issues with our students on some of the other over the counter stuff? Or is that usually going through the nurse, I'm just thinking of, especially mostly our high school students and they have like the baggie of headaches and Tums and whatever it is.
May I respond? So we are, are not actively looking for students that may be taking, you know, Tums or some other type of over the counter medication, that they may, sinus medication. What they're supposed to do is that that is, they're supposed to take it to the clinic and it be administered under the supervision of the individual in the clinic. We can go back and review if we have any discipline cases pertaining to that, but I believe that for the most part, if that does occur, the parent is notified and/or the student is made aware that that is not something that they're able to have on them during the, the school day on campus.
Got it, okay, and then my second question is, do we need to put something in here about students not sharing any of the medication that they're allowed to have with themselves with other students?
Good question. That would again be, that would be in the Code of Student Conduct and that would be a violation that we could process through the procedures that are in there with respect to contraband.
Member Salamanca?
Thank you.
I do think that Member Salamanca brings up a good point, and I understand. I do think that Member Salamanca brings up a good point, and I understand that it's in the code of conduct, but in policies that's referencing medicine, there should be language in there that says it's not shareable. Like that, I, and I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with me, but I feel like it's important that, that there is language in there that says you are not allowed to share the over, the over the counter medicine with another student.
If the board would feel more comfortable, we could all, we can make reference to the code of conduct as well. That would cover the sharing of medication and having medication on them that is not sunscreen or headache medication.
Okay, perfect. Is everybody in agreement on that?
I'm getting shakes.
Yes.
Yes. Member Castor Dental.
What the superintendent just said is there, there would be a reference to the code of conduct about sharing except for headache medicine and sunscreen? I mean, I'll know, I mean, what if there's a, so let me just explain, what if there is a seventh grader who brings a bottle of Tylenol and gives some to their friend who has a headache? Is that a problem if students are allowed or share sunscreen?
So I believe, and I'll defer to legal if I'm wrong, but the statute does not contemplate the sharing. Number one, we don't know if that children have allergies or may have an allergic reaction. We assume it's Tylenol, but we don't, we really don't know what they're having, so they should not be sharing. The statute allows the individual student to have that with them. It does not state anything about the sharing. So under our code of conduct, we would follow the consequences for that, which, again, I'm going to defer to our, our legal team, that if that is something that we, we find out has happened, that there would probably be verbal direction, there might be a phone call to the parent for a first offense. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the different consequences are for having or for sharing Tylenol, but it does, it clearly does not allow for the sharing of that.
Thank you. And I appreciate your, I understand the concern about a friend dosing their friends with some Tylenol, but I'm, I'm also, I don't want the punishment or the consequence to be severe. So I think that the call home, those first steps, I think, make sense. And then making sure that since this is a new policy, that we explain clearly to the students that they are not to share so that they don't get caught up. Because, because with this language, I would assume if I was a teenager, I would think that I could share it, it wouldn't be a problem. So I think that needs to be clarified either in practice or procedure, if not policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Castor Dental.
I, I, I agree. It needs to be, it needs to be clarified as well.
Member Byrd.
Thank you, Chair. Let me click back, okay. So my question is about over the counter medications being given in the clinic. It says, number nine, over the counter medication may be administered by O C P S nurse, school health assistant, or trained staff with prior written authorization from parent or guardian. And I know you said, and from my experience, I know as a mom, that the medication has to be brought in, signed in, in like the original box, and then for it to be available for the student. Is it possible to, to have certain over the counter medications in our clinic that are available, that aren't necessarily brought in by parents, but that we have written permission that they're authorized to do it so that parents don't have to bring that in? And the reason I'm asking is because I remember as, I have a daughter that had headaches all the time, and so I would always have to bring in, you know, the Tylenol, which is, or Ibuprofen or whatever, but which is not a big deal, but, you know, obviously they expire and then I'd have to bring in more and then she wouldn't even use, maybe one pill or two, you know, like, so I'm just curious as to why we can't have a supply of basic over the counter medications in the clinic. Parents authorize the use of it if needed and then have that supply ready so that every parent doesn't have to provide it, because I don't think every parent would unless you knew that your child was prone to certain things. So that's my question, if we can, is that a possibility or not? Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Enval, please.
I think we can explore that. I don't believe we currently do that, and the reason being, we're not sure what kids may have, what allergies to what types of medication. I know that if you have an eproxen sodium allergy, you cannot take a leave, and so we may not know that. So I, and then we'd have to figure out if schools are going to staff, you know, supply certain things, and I, I think it would be a lot of extra work on our nurse staff. We can look into it, but I don't, I don't think that we do that now, because there's just too many unknowns.
Member Byrd, would you like to follow up?
Yeah, no, I totally agree with you. I think that it would have to be, and I've, and the reason I've seen, like, when I've had my kids in summer camps, they give me a form and it says, do you give permission for your child to have Tylenol? And you check yes or no. Ibuprofen, yes or no? Hydrocortisone, yes or no? You know, like the basic ones. An acid, yes or no? You know, those things? And I give permission at the beginning, and then if my child needed it during that camp, they would be able to go to the health center and get it. So I'm wondering if we could do something like that, and I realize that we would have to keep a stock, but, you know, I'm just trying to figure out ways to make it easier for parents and our kids, and, you know, some parents work and they can't take off to come, you know, if it's just a headache or if it's just something basic, I'm just trying to figure out ways we could make things a little easier, so, just a thought.
Thank you, Member Byrd.
If I could just add to that, on top of that, we used to, we're, as you know, we're revising the code of student conduct right now. We used to have a possession of excessive over the counter medication and sharing in the code, and it was a level four, but it looks like we removed it before. We can look into, as we're revising our code of student conduct, we can look into adding a local code for any maybe possession of over the counter medication and, and follow through kind of line, lines of what Member Castor Dental was saying, follow along the lines of, you know, like a level, a stepped, a attempt, you know, contact parents or that kind of thing. I don't remember what excessive use of the, what made the level four, but we also have, looking at Cessar, we have the giving a prescription medication to another student as an example of drug offense, but giving over the counter dosage is a local offense. So I think we can probably look at adding that local offense in there and potential revision since we're still working on that, and we can bring that forward to you in our revision to the code.
Thank you, Mrs. Enval. A member, Frant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just jump on that whole discussion about medications. I think it is good to make sure that kids aren't sharing the medication, so I like what we're, the discussion that's being had. I am leery of having a just stockpile of medications for students to come in. I think if parents feel their kid gets headaches more often, then you just keep that, like a little travel size in their, their backpack. It would be nice to have, to require it to be in, like if you're bringing medication, it would be nice for us to require it to be in some sort of labeled bottle, because if you just have it in a Ziploc, although all of us moms throw that in our bag, because we buy the big five hundred and pour it in, but something where then the student, now there's no, there's no question of what the medication is, but I guess that's more of a procedure part, correct? And does that make it, if we're, we can't really require it to be labeled, can the bag itself be at least labeled?
So the, the statute that went into effect, one thousand two point two zero, it just talks about the, a student, so it's singular, may possess and use, and it does not specifically say, you know, it shall be in the original container and all that kind of stuff. So I think internally, when we're doing our training perhaps with the code of student conduct, and if we're going to add that local code back in, we could make that part of that or recommend that it be part of it. I think, I think staff's going to really have to explore what that's going to look like at the school and the logistics of that type of implementation at the school level.
Maybe then we can just encourage parents, if you do send your child with any sort of headache medication, we would prefer that it be so that there's no confusion, and maybe that could just be stated so that parents know, and it's just easier that way, I think. And I was going to say, I actually, I really like this because otherwise parents are like sneaking, like here, just to make sure nobody sees that you have it, and it's just Ibuprofen or Tylenol, and it's over the counter. So I, I do really like this. I feel like it, it shows parents that, okay, we trust you, we trust your kids. And then, I feel like there was one other thing I was going to state about this. Medication, oh, just in that, the part one, I like this line of the each school shall also train a minimum of two backup clinic staff, and I think that's helpful. It answers my question as well, where if, if, if the clinic staff is not available, they're gone, and you have your substitute, those would be backup clinic staff. And so that, that is helpful. I think it's helpful for our parents to know that there's somebody who is trained, who understands, and your child will be in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Frant. Mrs. Enval, is there anything that would prevent this board from requiring that any over the counter medicine be in a bottle that lets us know what it is? Is there anything that would prevent us legally from being able to do that?
And use medication to relieve headaches while on school property or at a school-sponsored event or activity without a physician's note or prescription if the medicine, if the medication is regulated by the United States Food and Drug Administration for over the counter use to treat headaches? I, I would caution the board to make sure that the policy is broad enough so that the superintendent has the ability to implement the logistics of how it would be managed at schools. I don't know what requiring, I don't know what kind of impact it would have on schools if you required that everything be in its original container, and also would students put other things in the container other than what is in there to begin with? So there's nothing, to answer your question, no, there's nothing that you could, I mean, you can go ahead and put that in there, I just, I think that staff should evaluate what, what effect that'll have, and we can certainly pull this policy off if we want to have staff explore that and provide new proposed revised language if needed.
To do, I guess we'll take a quick poll of the board. Member Frant.
Revising the language to make sure that it's labeled or in original container. I think it is hard because, like what you're saying, Ms. Enval, it could cause issues. So I think, again, if we can just say, if, maybe just a note or an email could be sent home to parents, just saying we would prefer that it's in its original container, but again, if a student has it in a Ziploc bag and it is Tylenol, and we know that it's Tylenol because it says Tylenol on it, it's not like they're going to get in trouble. So I guess we can't really require it, but maybe just encouraging parents. But if that's going to be an issue, I think I would defer then to the superintendent because this is more procedural instead of policy.
I don't want to make it any more complicated for parents and students than life already is. We have so many policies, and if they happen to miss this one, and now we're giving out level twos or threes or, I don't, I don't want to go down that road. I want to trust our parents to know what's best for their kids and do the right thing.
Great, agreed. Member Felder.
Excuse me, I too want to be able to trust the parents, and I don't want to have to tie the hand of the superintendent with the policies being so strict, but in all honesty, I do have concerns because I put different medicines in different bottles that are not labeled for, because I know what medicine I need to take, and it's a human, not necessarily error, but it's a, it's a human thing that we do. So again, I don't want us to be so restrictive till something happens and the kid just only passed on a bear aspirin at eighty milligrams, you know, so, yeah, we need to look at the policy again, with the wording. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Dr. Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't want to make things any more difficult for parents. I want to make it easier for teachers who might come upon some medication that a student has, especially if they're in elementary school. I can just see that it would be more helpful, just like when a teacher might say, please label all your jackets with your kid's name on it. It makes things easier. It's not a policy, but I would say that it would be a best practice if there's a way that we could encourage parents, if they are sending something in with their child, to have something labeled so that someone can identify it.
Member Salamanca, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I definitely agree that I don't want to create more for the implementation of this, but I think it is helpful to explicitly say no sharing, still by, by the code of conduct. And then I do think it's just some clarity on that implementation and upfront at the beginning of the year, telling students. I, I think something like sunscreen is something's really easy to get in trouble over, you have a, I don't know, SGA, something outside barbecue, someone brings sunscreen, you're sharing In trouble because they're not aware of this, but I, I want to make it clear that, you know, we're trying to be safe and keep students safe, and I can see many parents being upset if a student has allergies and uses something that they're not supposed to. So I, I think just for clarity and explicitness, and I also don't want any inconsistency in how maybe principals or different parents and communities react to students sharing. So I think that was my main concern is, how can we be explicit about it, but also make sure that students and parents know that that's not okay? I think many folks think the sunscreen's fairly harmless to share, so I also just want to make sure we're not, it's not a level four.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Member Byrd?
Hi, yes, thank you. I was actually buzzing in on a different topic, but no, I agree with, with what was just said. I don't think we need to, you know, make it more difficult as far as the putting in there that it's in the specific container, because like I said, or someone said, if we put it in a, if a child's in a baggie and it's Tylenol, we know it's Tylenol, we're not going to necessarily discipline them for that. So I don't know that it needs to be in the policy. And then as far as sharing, I, I mean, I would, I would assume, I mean, I would prefer probably that it states it somewhere in this policy, but just for when parents are looking at this policy, they know that they can share with their kids, you know, you know, you can't share this. Or when we're, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be in policy. I guess that could just be when it's shared out at the schools, we could say that according to the code of conduct, you guys know you can't share any medication. I'm, I mean, I'm fine either way. But I was buzzing in because I had a question about prescription medications. There are, I just need some clarity on something. There are certain medications or prescriptions that students are allowed to carry with them if it's in their, like, I E P five oh four. I'm getting clarity on this to make sure that this is possible, like inhalers or EpiPens. Do we have students that are allowed to carry those with them if it's in like an I E P of five oh four? And if so, is it possible for them to also have prescription migraine medicine added to? for them to also have prescription migraine medicine added to a 504 IEP for some students? I know that, I had a parent ask me this, that they're in a large high school, and the time it takes to travel to the clinic to get the migraine medicine can be too long for the fast-acting medication to get in the system to prevent, you know, major migraine. So they were wondering if the child can carry it with them. So can I just get some clarity on those things? Thank you.
So there are self-carry forms that parents can have completed with their physicians so students can carry diabetes and epinephrine and inhalers and those type of medications. As far as migraine medication, I might refer to legal to see if that falls under the Florida statute of self-carrying headache medications. We might need more clarification on that.
No, we can look into that. I don't recall that it does fall in there because you said it prescription, correct, Board Member Bird?
Yes, prescription migraine medication.
Yeah, I don't believe it falls on that, but certainly our staff can look into that, and then we can update the board. I had buzzed, I'll wait if you finish.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Next.
So I believe that the way to address what concerns the board has is through the Code of Conduct so that we're not getting bogged down in the policy. Additionally, we have revisions, some that have come by statutorily, where we can actually create messaging for parents at the beginning of the school year that schools can share in their newsletters at the district level. We can push out, we can push out Connect Oranges about the self-carry of sunscreen and headache medication so parents are aware, and then we can include that in our Code of Conduct as well. I'm sure the board is aware, and as a parent, I was guilty of this, not in Orange County Public Schools, in Seminole County Public Schools. But our children carry, you know, over the counter medication. And typically, I won't say always, when a child maybe has in previous time had headaches or is feeling discomfort due to maybe their menstrual cycle, if they, if they've taken medication, the teacher typically does not move forward with any type of disciplinary action. And so we can certainly make sure that our Code of Conduct stipulates steps that refer to counseling, redirection, and contacting of a parent as those first or second steps, and that they are able to put in place a plan that works for that child based on their particular circumstances. And for the child that has the prescription medication, they may be able to write into the 504 plan that it's housed someplace that may not be the clinic that is secure. And so we can look to make sure our schools understand that they can customize for individual child needs so that they are getting the medication that's needed.
Mrs. Enval?
If I may, I'm going to read from 1,006.062, it's titled, Administration of Medication and Provision of Medical Services by District School Board Personnel. It requires that the principal or someone at the school be trained in, to assist administration of prescription medication. And it also requires that prescribed medication is to be in the original container. So that's for prescription, that's not, and then the statute about the sunscreen and the headache medication specifically refers to over the counter.
Thank you, Mrs. Enval.
Dr. Custer Dental?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about sharing medicine when it's among siblings. Would that? Sorry. I don't mean to go down a rabbit hole, but I don't want anyone to get in trouble if they go to their sister who has the bottle of Tylenol. And then, when you're looking at family, then do cousins count, or people who are in the same household? I don't know. But I just think we have to make sure that we are flexible enough in our procedures.
May I respond? And I certainly don't want to complicate things. I, as a parent, I know if they have headaches, if they aren't feeling well on their stomach, you're like, here, take a Tums when you need it. But we need to be careful how broad we are because it will only take one instance where a sibling or a cousin or a member of the same household takes something that that child has, they have a reaction to it, and now we have possibly a very unfortunate situation. So our team can go back, they can look at how other districts are doing it and address it through the code. Again, I think we can even put out a Q and A for parents with this particular change involving the ability to carry sunscreen and headache medication that we not only distribute to families, but that we have on our website so we can answer those types of questions. Can it be shared? What do I do if there are siblings on campus and one has the Tylenol? We can respond and give parents that information so that they are aware. But I want to be careful because it's the devil's in the details, and it will just take one incident for us to really deal with the tragedy.
And thank you for that. I just want to make sure that, even though this sounds like we are belaboring the issue, these are questions that parents will have. And we, it helps to have thought through them all, all the different scenarios. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Custer Dental, I have another question. First, I want to clarify, are we going to add to this policy that they, something about the student code, the student Code of Conduct? Yes, we are. Okay, perfect. My next question is just about, about the sunscreen. So they could be bringing lotion or spray sunscreen?
That is correct.
So what happens if, again, we're just trying to hash some of these things out, if there's an event outside and kids are horseplay, and a child accidentally sprays sunscreen in the eyes of a student? Would that fall under student Code of Conduct? I mean, we want, do we have, is there anything even in student Code of Conduct that refers to sunscreen sprayed in the eyes?
No, but it would, it does refer to horseplay.
It does?
Yes. And probably for 99.9% of any offense, we can tie it to the Code of Conduct. And when we can't, the following year, there is a revision to the code that will have that situation. So in that, and we will work through our training of our administrators, both principals and assistant principals and teachers, for them to understand that with the sunscreen, the headache medication, that we don't want to come down hard. This is more of an opportunity to educate and be able to redirect and inform parents who probably don't know about the changes, as opposed to making it a Level Three or Level Four fence where the child now is looking at a suspension or even a detention. We will work that into our training so that it's crystal clear that especially with initial offenses, we're going to go by way of redirection, guidance, parent contact. And for your particular case, it would probably fall under horseplay, and the child would more than likely be sent to the clinic, parent would be notified, the child that was horsing around would probably get redirection, and that would be the end of the, you know, incident.
Wonderful, thank you. And my last question, because it just occurred to me. Say we have a student that is habitually misusing sunscreen, spray. This law doesn't give us the ability to tell that child they can no longer bring it, correct? We still have to allow them to bring it, even if they're consistently misusing it, and they're receiving the consequence of that misuse. We aren't allowed to take it away or say, no more, you're spraying kids in the eyes every day, you can't bring sunscreen.
All right, but you can escalate the consequences and get to repeated misconduct, or there's, there's one that talks about where you're insubordinate because you're not following. And so at that point, you would probably have a change in the behavior. And there may even be an opportunity or enough evidence that they would be able to put things in place at that child, if they are going to put on sunscreen, that it has to be under the supervision of an adult. We're not preventing them from carrying it, but we can direct how it's applied.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, I think we're ready to move on. The next policy before you today is JLCE, First Aid Emergency Medical Care. Proposed revisions to Policy JLCE include authorizing the principal or designee to provide guidance when apparent legal guardian cannot be reached in the event of an emergency, and updating the time period within which an accident or incident report must be completed. Additional proposed revisions made to the existing policy language to include content formatting and terminology edits with statutory language. In the title, the word "and" has been added. In the policy, description pupil has been changed to student. In Section Three of Student Injuries, the wording has been changed to notify the parent legal guardian. It also includes verbiage that principal has discretion to provide guidance for the care and safety of the student in the event that apparent legal guardian can't be reached. Section Four has been changed to address that in the event of serious injury or life-threatening situation, the principal or designee shall call 911. In Section Five, the wording has been changed to indicate that a report must be submitted to risk management within one workday of the school becoming aware of the accident or incident. Also, in Section Five, wording has been added to include that specific details must be provided when the report is made. Section Seven, the wording has been updated to follow the procedure schools are currently following when notifying OCPS District Office of an emergency on the campus either by phone or by email. Under the Administration of First Aid by School Personnel, Section Two, the wording has been changed to provide clarification that any OCPS employee is to take reasonable steps in a life-threatening situation. This concludes the revisions for JLC, JLCD, and JLCE policies presented today. I now turn it over to Superintendent Vasquez.
Madam Chair, we're ready for any comments or questions the board may have in relation to Policy JLCE.
Thank you, Superintendent Vasquez. Member Frant?
I just had one quick question, and it's more procedural. When a child comes in with, I'm thinking more the elementary level, they scrape their knee, they come in, they're really looking for a hug and a little bit of ice. Do, do we currently have our nurses send a quick little email to the parents letting them know, your child came in, they had a little boo-boo on their knee, it looked good, I gave them some ice, and they went back to their room happy? Something like that. Just so parents are maybe aware of what's happening, and I feel like that kind of communication. So I don't know if that's currently happening or more for the bigger events.
So each individual school manages their clinic, but there are little green slips of paper that students are given as to what time they've checked into the clinic, what time they left the clinic, and what was done during their visit in the clinic.
Okay, and then that green slip of paper goes in their backpack and makes it home? I would love to suggest, if possible. Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, I personally have never have received any slips of paper for any of my kids, but I'm not saying that they weren't taken care of or whatnot. I just think it is, I think it adds just like another step of customer service, if you will. If the nurse had something, they'd just pull up the email real quick. It's a one-liner. Just wanted to let you know, Johnny came to the clinic, had a little boo-boo on his knee, but gave him some ice, and he seemed very happy. And it kind of documents as well for the nurse in case something were to ever come back. And then they can say, well, this is what happened, and this is the time that they came in. And I don't know if that's too much, if we're adding too much on the plate. But I do think it would be nice. I don't think we, I wouldn't say I'm requiring it because I think that's on you. You do what you, I'm just saying, like, I don't want to put more pressure. But I think it's a cool step if we could provide that for parents.
Dr. Vasquez?
I believe that the goal at most of the schools is to be able to inform the parent, whether it's the teacher that does the notification, or the clinic person that their child's been to the clinic. But they all document entry time and what happened. So that is for any child that comes into the clinic. The only concern, and I'm going back to my years as a principal, that there are certain times that the clinic is extremely busy, and they may not have the opportunity to email the parent or may, you know, think they're going to do it later and forget. So we can certainly put it out as guidance when we send out those initial communications at the beginning of the year. I believe we train the nurses and school health assistants at the beginning of the year. We could put that out there as a best practice as well. Sometimes if it is a substitute nurse, they don't have access to the student records, and so that is someone else that would then need to be able to look up that information. We still document that the child has come in, but a substitute nurse would not have access to those records.
Got it. Okay. So that could put a damper on things. I get you. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Frant. Member Gould?
Member Gould is good. Any other questions?
Melissa? Member Bird?
Yes, I was just on that same line. Is there a possibility of talking to IT about some kind of automation? I mean, I would think that there might be, I mean, I don't know if these records are kept in written form, because I know that everything has to be documented. So I don't know if it's in written form, or if it's electronically that the notes are kept, but I would think that there might be some easy, you know, way to set this up where they don't even have to do it, but it automatically emails, sends email out, like a notification that your child was in the clinic for, you know, XYZ. Maybe that's something we could explore to make it easier. I agree that that would be a great step if possible. And then my only other question was just about serious, number four, in the event of a serious injury or life-threatening situation, they shall call 911. I have concerns about head injuries, and I know we talked about this at a previous meeting, that head injuries can often kind of go unnoticed, or not unnoticed, but you think that they're okay, but may not be. So I'm just wondering if there's somewhere in here that we could add something about head injuries. And I don't know what that looks like. I don't know, I don't think that, you know, necessarily 911 needs to be called for every head injury, but I certainly do not want any child that has, you know, been hurt with a head injury to, you know, not have something done that should have been done, and then it turn into something more serious, as has been, as we've seen in the news recently. So I don't know what we can do about that, or if there's anything we can put in this policy, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bird. Who's, who would like to respond to Member Bird?
Do you want us to look into that and see if there's anything that can be added? Okay.
Staff will look into that. We don't have an exact answer, but we can research and bring that back to the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. We're chuckling up here, because when I asked if someone would like to respond, Vicki went to, Member Felder went to hit her cue, and I said, no, honey, not you. All right, thank you. Member Bird, is there anything else?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I think we're good. We're ready to move on to the next policy. Thank you so much. We're ready to move on to the next policy, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, do you want to take a short break? As this is a much longer policy revision, or do you want to keep going?
I'm at the pleasure of the board. Anybody else? Are we good? Let's go, let's move forward.
All right, our next policy is policy J I C K Threats. We have several presenters with us. We have Staff Attorney Haynes, Executive Director Ms. Bridges, and Chief Holmes. They will go through the presentation. If the board would like for them to stop at certain sections for questions as opposed to going through the entire revision, please let us know so that they can, they can move so accordingly.
Yes, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chair Gallo, Board Members, Superintendent Vasquez.
I'm sorry, can you move the microphone closer to you?
Okay. Try this again. Can you hear me better?
Yeah, just pull it a little bit closer. Thank you. I know.
Good morning, Vice Chair Gallo, Board Members, and Superintendent Vasquez. Again, my name is Alkevia Haynes. I'm a staff attorney in the Office of Legal Services, and I have with me Chief Brian Holmes and Mary Bridges, and we will be presenting on the revised policy J I C K Threats.
You're going to have to really speak louder, get really close to the mic, because I'm concerned, we're having a hard time hearing you, so I'm concerned that Member Bird and Member Salamaca will have an equal hard time hearing.
I think you guys are confirming that my husband always says that he cannot hear me, so I will speak louder. Okay. So, J I C K Threats. The purpose is proposed revisions to policy J I C K include language to comply with the new threat management module as set forth in Rule 6A-1.0019 Florida Administrative Code. This rule sets forth process by which school districts, K-12 schools, charter school governing boards, and charter schools identif- oh, sorry. Identify, access, manage, and monitor potential and real threats to school safety and/or student safety. Additional proposed revisions to existing policy language include content formatting and authority citations. In the first section, definitions denoted with a plus sign are adopted as provided in Florida statutes, the Florida Administrative Code, and/or the Florida Department of Education, Office of Safe Schools, Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Manual. The new definitions were taken from Rule 1.0019 Florida Administrative Code and/or the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Manual. Under number one, we revise concerning behavior. We added concerning behavior and took away apparent behavior and added concerning communication, which came from the Florida Administrative Code. Again, all the definitions that were added in this section are due to the updates to the model. So we just added these definitions to conform with the new model. I want to direct you to letter H, imminent threat. That is a new definition under the new model. And also, under K, the levels of concern were changed. The old model referenced substantive threats, serious substantive threats, and very serious substantive threats, and transient threats. And under the new model, they have been replaced with low, medium, and high levels of concern, and also unfounded determinations. Also, under letter S and letter T, student of concern has been added. That is a definition that comes from the Florida rule, and also Student Support Management Plan. On page five, those are, again, those definitions have been either taken out or updated to reflect the new definitions in the Florida rule. And same thing for page six. That concludes all the definitions, are there any questions?
Yes, we do have questions from the board. Dr., Member Dr. Castro Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for these updates. These, I was wondering what the little red plus sign meant. And I'm glad to see that the terms are much more clear. And they're defined, and they make sense. And I like the change in the level of concern from low, medium, and high. I think average people can understand that more so than transient and whatever the other ones are. I don't remember. And I also like where it says, it defines what a threat is, and also what a threat is not, or what constitutes, like where it says, "A threat is not a communication or behavior that is an obvious joke or unequivocally known by the observer to be innocuous." Because I know a lot of our high school kids joke around, and sometimes they get caught up in this with their language when they're just playing around. So I appreciate the clarity, and that's all. I don't have any questions, I just appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Member Dr. Castro Dental. So I have, I have a question. The, so the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Model is also referred to as Florida Model. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Manual has replaced the model behavior for threat assessment policies and best practices for K-12 schools. So it incorporates what's in the rule as well as in the manual.
And is the manual available to the public, to parents, to look at? Or is the manual-
It is, it's attached to your board agenda items, too.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it is accessible to?
Yes, it's not confidential or exempt, it is available. And we could even put it on the website if we needed to.
Okay, so parents can look at the manual and see what's detailed in the manual? Okay, thank you, that's great. And then, so I'm just, in one A and B, when we talk about concerning behavior, it talks about observable behavior that elicits concerns. Who, who would be observing the behavior and determining that it is of concern, whether it's via communication or via observable behavior? Like, who, is there one person that's responsible for that? Is that a student, a teacher, any staff member? Can report a change in behavior of a student to anybody on campus? What, what does that look like?
So yes, anybody can report a change in behavior. That, it's reported to the chair of the school-based threat management team, and then they would assess, make the initial assessment if it needs to be referred to the entire school-based threat management team.
Okay, so if a student reported it to, say, a teacher or the safe coordinator, the safe coordinator or teacher would go to the chair, and then they would?
The chair makes the initial assessment, and then if it needs to be referred to the school-based threat management team, the entire team, then they would refer it.
Who is usually the chair at the school level?
The chair is going to be an administrator. So at the elementary school level, it'll probably be the assistant principal, and at the middle and high school level, it'll also be the assistant principal. We, I think a concern from the last work session that we had was that if it would be somebody from instruction, or like a dean, and we have clarified that to, it will not be a dean, it will be an assistant principal. And the rule also provides that in the absence of the assistant principal, who will be the chair, then the principal will step in as the vice chair.
Okay, so there's always a designee.
Only one administrator.
Okay, so there's always a designee in the event of an absence?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I see none, we're ready to move on, thank you.
Threat assessment teams are now considered threat management teams, so you will see those changes throughout the policy. So S T A T, it's now designated the S B T M T, which is the School-Based Threat Management Team, and D T A T has been replaced with D T M T, which is the District Threat Management Team. So you see those changes throughout. And to address your previous question, under number two, the Threat Management Chair and Vice Chair, the principal, is responsible for designating the vice chair, and the, as I stated, the vice chair will be an administrator and not a dean. Each school has, under number three, each school has a School-Based Threat Management Team that is comprised of four members at minimum, including persons with expertise in counseling, instruction, school administration, and law enforcement. The School-Based Threat Management Team shall also include a member with personal knowledge of the student of concern, who is the subject of the threat management. The new rule also added a District Threat Management Team, but here at O C P S, we also, we already had that in place prior to this rule. So we just updated the new requirements of that team. And the District Threat Management Team receives referrals from the School-Based Threat Management Teams to assess serious situations and provide support, if needed, to the School-Based Threat Management Teams. And the superintendent or her designee is responsible for designating the proper D T M T team members. The District Threat Management Team now also includes the coordinator, and that coordinator is designated by the superintendent or her designee, and they oversee all district threat management programs. They serve as the chair of the D T M T, and they also serve as a direct liaison between the district and the department.
Are we still on page seven?
Yes. Bottom of page seven. On page eight, it just goes into the requirement, which includes instruction, school administration, someone from law enforcement. And it also, again, as the rule now requires, that the School-Based Threat Management Team, one of the members has to have personal knowledge of the student of concern. And if they don't have personal knowledge, let's say it's a new student or something like that, then they will try to reach out to somebody from the old school to get the student's of concern's baseline behavior, so they can properly assess that student. I'm going to stop there, if there's any questions.
Yes, Member Ferrant.
I just wanted to say kudos to the team on part B, the district level, and the fact that we already have that in place here. The more that I speak with Chief Holmes, and the more that we learn about the safety and security of our students and our schools, O C P S, I feel, goes above and beyond, and has already thought proactively. Where I'm seeing other areas, maybe even places where they've had incidents throughout the United States, where there were things that were in place that are not in place, that parents say, well, this could happen here in O C P S. And I say, well, no, because we have these things already in place. And so just kudos to the team for always thinking proactively. And I love when the state says, hey, we need to have a district-level team, and you say, oh, we already have that, we'll just put it in our policy. So just a shout-out to you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. So I have a question. I love that when we look at the School-Based Threat Management Teams, that we're including somebody who has personal knowledge of the student, because I think that that's extremely important, that the person who's helping making these decisions has an intimate knowledge of the student. So kudos on that. On, under the establishment, under instruction, we're required to have an instruction personnel on the School-Based Threat Management Team. Is that usually, is that going to be like a teacher, a dean? I'm trying to understand, like, when these meetings happen, is it during the school day, is it after school? Because you're required to meet, like, what, once a month? Or there's a timeline on when you have to meet, correct?
Correct.
There's, yeah.
So the instructional team member is usually a dean, but again, under the new model, it's been changed that the chair is supposed to make an initial determination as to the level of concern. And so not in every situation, under the old model, the School-Based Threat Management Team met to discuss every student, but that does not happen under the new model. So what the trend we've been seeing is there's, maybe, it depends on the school, but the entire team is probably meeting sometimes only once per month. The School-Based Threat Management Team. Now, the district team does meet a little more often, but the School-Based Threat Management Teams are coming together maybe once or twice a month. So it's not happening every day or every week.
And so there's no requirement that they must meet once a month? For the School-Based Threat Management Team? Is a requirement that they meet at least once a month, or is there no requirement?
Yes, so there's a requirement that they come together once a month, just to assess what's been going on, but again, it's not weekly.
Okay. And then, in the instance of like an elementary school, most elementary schools don't have deans. So it would be up to the principal, who's the chair, to determine who, out of instruction, would fill that position?
That's correct. And again, at the elementary level, the way the model is set up, that the chair is not the principal, it would be the assistant principal. The principal would only step in in the absence of the assistant principal.
And the instructional personnel would have the right of refusal if they didn't choose to serve on this committee? Or on the threat management team? Could they tell, could they tell the principal, thank you, but no thank you?
I'm going to defer to Superintendent Vasquez for that.
So I would probably say that for most of those cases, the answer would be yes. But if it's somebody that is critical to the team, for example, let's say it is a school that has one E S E teacher, that is the teacher that is working with this child that has been, we would work to have conversations to find a time that is mutual. Some of the requirements that we have, it needs to be somebody that knows that student. And so if we couldn't find someone else that knows that student, we would probably need that teacher to be in attendance, or we would be able to find ways to get their input for that committee. I don't see many- I don't see many cases where that would occur. Certainly at the secondary level, there are multiple individuals. But at the, at the elementary level, it becomes more of a concern if that child is just in one teacher's classroom, and they are the one that knows the child.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Do we give supplements or stipends to those who serve on these committees at the school-based level?
No, we do, we do not. The meetings do take place during the day, correct? And the people that are serving on it on a regular basis are the administrators, might be the counselor, if they have a safe coordinator or behavior specialist. The classroom teachers would vary if needed for a child. So no, there is no supplement, just like we don't give a supplement if they're sitting in an I E P meeting.
Okay, thank you. Member Ferrant.
All right.
Member Dr. Custer Tindell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about when threats are reported. Let's say like a parent shares with a teacher about a concern they have about another student or something they heard. Does the parent ever hear that the threat was considered or taken to the next level to look into? I don't know if they ever know if there's anything that happens as a result.
Are you referring to the parent of the student of concern or the parent that is just reporting another student?
Someone who reports a concern or a threat. Is there any way, did they get any information back that they were heard or?
So under F R P A, if it's not the student's parent, we cannot provide them with any specific information about the student and what was done. We can tell them that we looked into it, but we cannot give, if it's not their child, we cannot give them specific information about what was done.
Right. I understand that. I just, I'm not sure that people who are reporting threats get that information, that like, thank you, we are, we are looking into it, or anything like that.
If it's regarding their child, like if that person threatened their child, then they are provided some updates. But again, if it's not concerning their particular child, then we can only say that the situation was looked into under F R P A.
Okay. No, I'm just saying that they don't always get that information, that it's, we're looking into it. They don't always get that either. So just making sure that, that there is some kind of follow-up for the person who's reporting something that, yes, thank you for the information, we are going to follow up on that. And then also, when it comes to students who are reporting things, like younger students, and they're reporting it anonymously, I'm not sure if they understand that term. Is there a way for us to make that more clear? Like, you can let someone know, and they don't have to know your name? You know, I don't know how we can convey that abouts, to students, what anonymously means. So it doesn't have to be in the policy necessarily, just when we're conveying that information?
Yeah, we can definitely add that when we're talking about, when we're talking to students about if they have, you know, if they have an issue, as when we're talking about like self-harm, you know, we tell them to talk, we could include in that, that, you know, if you ever have a concern about the safety or anything like that, you know, that you can report that anonymously. So it could easily go into those, you know, that, that instruction, when we have that instruction.
So to understand that.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
So I just want to go back. We send a connect orange for every threat. So parents are notified of the threat and that it's being looked into.
That's required by the law.
I'm pretty sure it's required. So if there is a specific situation where that you know there was a threat made and the parent wasn't, we send the messaging. Those are tracked.
Back to the individual or to everyone at the school?
Well, it depends on who's been impacted. So if it was, you know, children on a bus, those parents of the children on the bus are notified. If it's at the school, it's the school. Now, the parent that may have directly notified the school of that may not get an individual call, but the call-out is done. So that, whoever is, whoever has shared that with you, maybe they need to go back and check if their contact information is correct at the school, because those communications go out very regularly.
Thank you. Not having kids at the school anymore, I don't always hear some of that follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, let's move on.
Under number three, training, all school-based threat management teams and district team members have to complete the basic Florida model training, which is the new training that's approved by the Office of Safe Schools and shall participate in that training on a, on guidance based from the department. Regarding your previous question about meetings, the threat management teams are to meet as often as needed to fulfill its duties of assessing and intervening with students who whose behavior may pose a threat to harm to themselves or others, but no less than And again, under C, that definition was that, sorry, that was added to follow the language And under page 10, again, those were just corrections updating, going from the S T A T and D T A T to the S B T M T and D T M T. Under C, that's just a requirement of what the S B T M Ts and the D T M Ts have to report to the state, to the department, under the new rule. On page 10, I'm sorry. Page 11. And again, on page 12, that's just reflecting the updated, going from the threat assessment And on page 13, we're going to, I'm just going to transition to Ms. Bridges, and she's going to talk about the changes, minimal changes to threats of self-harm.
Okay, let's stop there, just to see if we have any questions. Member Ferrant.
Just so, I guess we can kind of get a little clarity. When it says, displays concerning behaviors or makes concerning communication, is this really just about hurting someone else? So if a student says, I hate them, I want to kill them.
So when, when the new model came out, they did expand what this team could discuss to just students who have concerning behaviors. So to go through the whole threat process and the discipline piece, you know, that is different. That has to do with actually making a threat to somebody or saying something specific. But this team can discuss any person who they might think has concerning behavior and determine whether they should make a student support management plan, or, you know, provide some additional supports for the student. And so that's what that piece entails.
So the concerning behaviors, what, is that just like the way that they're acting, that they're, I guess that's what I'm trying to gather, like what?
It could be, you know, possibly that they're, they're doing something that could non-intentionally hurt somebody, you know, maybe they're throwing something in a classroom, or their, you know, their behaviors changed from what, you know, they were acting one way and now they're acting much different. They could bring that to the team, and the team could discuss if the student needs any more support. So I think it's just allowing the team to be able to discuss a broader range of students if there's a concern.
Okay. And then does this follow them along? Like, does it stay in their file?
It would, it wouldn't, it would move to any, any type of meeting they had about the student's behavior, or, you know, mental health, or whatever becomes of that. So if they had a student support plan, that plan might stay in their file. But again, this isn't disciplinary at all, or anything like that, so.
Okay. Just sort of like to have it on record that we were a little concerned, and we just kind of were keeping an eye on the kids.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. So I have a question. What is, what does the training consist of? Like, what does the training look like for the school-based, on the, on the Florida model? Have we started training, and what does that training look like? And weren't, weren't they already trained?
Oh, we're glad you asked. We had about a three-month window to train all members of school-based threat management team. We not only met that, we exceeded it. So we continue to train. There's a training going on right now. What does it look like? It goes over the Florida model. There's a standard curriculum for it that we follow. We have trainers that have been trained by the State of Florida, Office of Safe Schools, one of my police captains, and then we have one of our folks from mental health services who, student services that team-train that. So we kind of touch both sides of, of that component of our service delivery here, and it's going exceptionally well.
Okay. So we're having to retrain staff that we've already initially trained? Is it, is the training much different than the initial training?
They're going to have to be retrained, and they haven't come out with the retraining piece and component yet. But we'll learn more about that this summer at the School Safety Summit.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm assuming that they haven't also come up with the timeline or the timeframe of when everybody will need to be retrained to the Florida model?
So currently, everybody that's participating have, have been retrained. So the trainers that we have right now have been trained on the Florida model, and they're able to train anybody that's coming new to the team. So we've already, the, this went into effect as of January 1. So it's already in effect. So we've trained everybody that's currently on the team right now.
Okay. Because on, at the top of page nine, it says newly appointed S B T M Ts and D T M T members shall be trained within the timeframe set forth by the department. So I guess my question was, has the department set forth that timeframe?
Yes, they have. Sixty days.
Sixty days.
From assignment to being trained, sixty days. And to answer your other question, it's a one-day training for anybody that's not a chair, vice chair, or a principal. A chair, vice chair, and principals, they have to take a day and a half training. There's a separate piece, half a day, that they do to focus in on that responsibility as a chair, vice chair, or a principal.
Is the training more along the lines of learning the Florida model? Or is it, does it incorporate like de-escalation techniques, like behavior, any of those type items? Like, when you're assessing a child, there's a lot. And I know that we have counselors on the school-based threat management teams, but is there any training on, on how to communicate or de-escalate or to recognize certain signs?
It's on the Florida model. Most of the people that are assigned to these teams are well-versed in those areas that you're describing. They've received training outside of that. There's a law enforcement officer on this team, you know, we just go, mental health, somebody with instructional background, needless to say, an administrator. So they all have that kind of experience and what to bring to the table and how to deal with the student management plans and developing those plans, carrying out, you know, the function of trying to make the child whole. So with that said, they already have that experience.
So it's just strictly training for learning the new Florida model?
It is. And needless to say, these definitions that we have in here, so they understand how that applies to the actual process itself.
Is there online training, or does it have to be in person?
Oh, it's all in person.
Okay. I was just curious. All right. Thank you very much.
And also to address your question about the timeframe, we left it general in the policy, just in case they came back and told us that it changes. So that's why we left it general in the policy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Wait, wait, I don't think your mic's on, Mrs. Unville.
Oh, sorry. They already did tell us that the bound book that you all received during the work session, that that was going to be changing already. So that's why we added the little footnote in the bottom of the first page.
Yeah, I saw that.
Because if it changes, we, it's hard to change, as you know, going through the policy revision process is difficult as well. So we tried to keep everything as generic as possible, so that we reference the Florida model, so that when it changes, our policy also can follow those changes.
So the Florida model is new, and that they've already told us they're changing the Florida model. Will there, will there be training on the new?
Yes.
So we're, so we're currently training people that have already been trained on a model that we already know will no longer exist. Is that a correct assessment?
I think they're just making some edits to the Florida model, enhancements.
And additionally, until those changes are made, the current Florida model is in place, and that has to be implemented. And so I, it was an incredible job that our team did. Superintendents, when we first heard about this in the fall of last year, all complained that with that short turnaround time, we would not be able to accomplish it. And our, I came back and I heard our team and their concern, and I said, and we have shared that, and we will meet the deadline, and we will train the individuals, so tell me what you need. So we have just done everything in our power to ensure that we are aligned. I do suspect, as Ms. Unville stated, that the changes are going to be minor, that the bulk of the Florida plan will remain. The main purpose was to have a consistent system statewide, which was not in place prior to the implementation of the Florida model.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, Superintendent Vasquez. I know y'all have done a great job, training and getting everybody trained. I share Member Ferrant's sentiments, that I, I think we are far and above other districts in the terms of our threat management, and we really are kind of the leader on how to do it and how to do it well. So kudos to all of y'all for what you've done so far. All right, we're ready to move on.
Okay. For the section on threats of self-harm, we only made minor changes. Prior to the Florida model, we had one procedural handbook that had threats to others in the front and all of that information, and then had threats to self in the same manual. With the new Florida model, we had to use their manual verbatim without making any changes. So we've just created a separate threat to self-harm manual, and we're calling it the suicide risk assessment manual. The state uses that terminology, suicide risk assessment, so we chose to use the same terminology as the state. So really, the only changes in this part of the actual policy is changing any of the wording that talked about threat of self-harm to suicide risk assessment. And I believe that is the only change we made throughout.
And is the suicide threat assessment, is it available to the public?
Yes, and that manual will be available to the public. We also have just a one-page flowchart that, that explains our procedure whenever a student has suicidal ideation or is suspected of self-harm, and that flowchart is available on the website also.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty. Is that?
Yes, that concludes the revisions for policy J I C K.
Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you. And we are down to our last one, school board policy, I K A grading systems. And Mary Bridges, our Executive Director for Student Services, will be the presenter.
Thank you all so much for the great work on the J I C K policy.
So I'll change my hat from mental health to academic services. So I'll change my hat from mental health to academic services. So now we're gonna discuss IKA grading systems. The purpose of this update is proposed revisions to policy IKA to include the addition of a section titled Grade Entry to ensure that students and parents or legal guardians are timely informed of academic progress. Additional proposed revisions to the existing policy language include content, terminology, formatting, and authority citations. So this is a rather short policy. The major changes in the first section, we updated the, just the specific authority and those things onto the first section. The second section about grade reduction as punishment, we just updated those sections. We did change for the third section, it did say high school grading system, and really, this is the same grading system we use for grades two through 12, so we just corrected that. And that's just your A, B, C, D, F, and the percentages for each of those grades. On page two, in the next section, it was titled Repeated Courses, and we just wanted to use the terminology that we actually use in the schools and the state uses, and that is grade forgiveness. So we changed the title of that. And then we removed any students entering after grade 2000 to 2001, because we thought we were probably safe with not having any of those students currently in school. So the big change to this was that last section where we entered grade entry. And the wording we used is, "Timely grades are an essential way to inform students and parents or legal guardians of academic progress. Students should submit assignments by due date to allow teachers ample time for grading. A teacher will publish graded assignments turned in on time to the district's online gradebook no later than two weeks from each assessment due date." And I'll wait for questions now.
Thank you. Mrs. Bridges, Dr. Castro-Dentel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the, let's see, the school grading system on page one. For grades two through 12, I understand that we use the same grading system, two through 12, but then the language in the policy is not as clear to me, because it goes on to say that the student progression plan shall specify the grading system for high schools and then shall be applicable for students who enter the ninth grade. But it doesn't then say that the grade scale applies to all grades two through 12. I just think it needs another sentence in there.
Yes, we can definitely add that.
Yeah, and then I don't think kids know how lucky they are to have a grade scale that's 90 to 100, 80 to 89. When I was in school, back in the day, it was a 94 to 100. Yes, much, it was yes. 87 was a B. 86 was a C. So I maybe add that in there too, to the policy. Yeah.
For the parents and the legal guardians to...
How lucky you are. And then my second comment is the last one. Grade entry, where it says, "A teacher will publish graded assignments turned in on time to the district's online gradebook no later than two weeks from each assignment's due date." Sometimes there are extenuating circumstances. A teacher could be out for some of that time, or a student has a difficult assignment to grade or something. I just wondered if there's a way we could say, "No later than two weeks from each assignment's due date unless otherwise provided," or...
Superintendent?
Thank you. So we've had a lot of conversations around this particular element. And we have landed on the language that we are presenting before you, simply because of all the concerns that were brought to us by the board from parents who are not getting great. So if they extend it, and we've gone through all these scenarios, and let's say we do three weeks. Progress report to the following week. So now the parent may have a week or less to be able to have conversations with the teacher or do any type of makeup work. And so we will leave it to the individual school that if there are extenuating circumstances, such as a major project, that teachers would communicate with their, the parents, and that they would have conversations with the principal. But those would be rare occasions, and that the teachers hopefully will plan accordingly. We believe that a great deal of this is because students are absent, and they are not turning in the assignments, and they're given the extra time to turn in the assignments. And then teachers believe that they have to accept assignments even beyond the time that that extension of days based on their absences. So now we are giving teachers the opportunity to say, "If you are absent two days, you have two days to submit the missed work." And then at that point in time, the teacher is the one that decides whether they are going to accept that late assignment or if they are not going to accept the late assignment. Additionally, we are looking at our attendance policy to tweak that, because there's no distinction between excused and unexcused absences. And we believe that will also have a positive impact on teachers and their ability to turn in assignments and tests more timely, because students now are given stricter guidelines. And now the ability to extend that timeline is with the teacher. And so if the teacher wants to do that, they are free to do that, but they don't have to do that.
Thank you. Member, Dr. Castro-Dentel?
Yes, thank you for that. I was, and I see that there would be flexibility for those individual cases that might arise. But thank you. I appreciate that. That explains it.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions along those lines. So if a teacher decides not to accept late work, then they would just enter in a zero for the student?
Yes.
Correct, okay. And maybe this isn't a thing anymore, and I'm just curious, because it was when my children were in school, where teachers would like go in and load in the assignments. And because they weren't like graded and the assignments were in there, like it would do a zero. And this was way before Skyward. It was like I was on a progress book, I think. And I would go in and like my daughter would have an F. And she'd be like, "It's because we haven't done the assignment yet, or we haven't done this." And then I would be emailing the teacher going, "Is this true?" Or, "Did she not turn it in?" So is that still, does it still work that way or no?
So, and I'm not an expert. I haven't been in in a while. But I do believe they can add in those extra assignments, but it's, they don't show as a zero until the teacher publishes them. So the teacher's on their end, if they're trying to get ahead and wants to kind of put in all of their assignments, so they know what assignments are there. But until they publish it, it doesn't go into, so the parents wouldn't be seeing those, and the students wouldn't see them.
Okay, so a parent seeing a zero would literally be for work that was not completed or not turned in?
Correct.
Okay. Member Ferrant?
That's exactly my, the topic I was thinking. Because it is true. The online grading system will either show the zero or missing, but even if the assignment was turned in. And so then it's very confusing, or there's a line, or it's a zero. I feel like a lot of times I've seen a zero, but it's turned in, and then my daughter says it's turned in, or my son, or whoever, and then it's...
If it has a zero, it could be that they've turned it in, but the teacher just hasn't changed the grade yet, so.
How, is there a better system? Like, I feel like there's gotta be a better way, a better system. I'm not a huge fan of this system, but then, I know, the superintendent's already thinking, "Oh, gosh." I don't want to like redo all this.
No, I mean, our student information system has, we all have our positive interactions and positive aspects about it, and then there are some of those challenges that we face with the system. Currently, grading really is on the teacher's list of responsibilities, and we give them the ability to have autonomy in that area. Other, outside of the grading scale, they can determine the weight. We are hoping that with this new, the changes to the policy, it will then allow them to better understand or feel that if they don't want to accept late work, they don't have to do so. We can, you know, we can certainly work through our principals to help them understand. Sometimes if it is confusing, if there's a zero. What I recommend as a parent is, if you see that and you have questions, just email the teacher, and they'll be able to tell you, "Yes, I'm in the process of grading it." Or, "No, your child did not turn it in. It is a zero." And sometimes there's miscommunication between what the student is saying and what the teacher has received, and that is the best way to resolve that with our current system. But we will certainly continue to let our teachers know that the accurate reporting and timely reporting of grades really is something that parents need to have so that they can be true partners with us in the education of their child.
Perfect. I do think, I like having this here, and I think it helps our teachers to see as well that they have that authority to say, "This is when it's due, and if it's not in, I'm not accepting the work anymore." And I think right now, there's a lot of freedom for students, and they think, "Well, it says it's due," but it's almost like it's a suggestion. Instead of, "This is when it's due." And when we all went to school, if we didn't turn it in that day, it was a zero, or you got, it started going down each day that you turned it in late. And so I think giving the teachers kind of that authority back, this is very helpful. I would love to, I know this is not really policy-related, but to discuss in the future ways that we can, like if there's a way for Canvas to work with us, where we're just doing Canvas and we don't have Skyward, something in that, and I don't know how that works, but... It doesn't. So that's the, I think that is also frustrating for teachers, where you're having to do it on Canvas, and then kids are looking at Canvas, and then like, "Is that where we're supposed to look, or is it Skyward?" So if there was some sort of system that just had it all in one, I feel like that would be beneficial, maybe save some time. But that's for a different discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Member Byrd?
Thank you. Oh, I've got an echo. Dr. Vasquez, I'm gonna kind of go on what Member Ferrant said. I think that the difficulty is when a student does turn it in and is waiting for the grade to be inputted. As a parent, when you look on Skyward, it shows, I believe it shows either a zero or like a dash. And, or, so I think that's what she's saying, what she was saying. Is there a way we can do something there? And I'm thinking there's gotta be a way in Skyward where once it's turned in, it'll show turned in awaiting grade, or something to that effect. Like some other designation, so a parent knows, "Okay, my child is telling me the truth. I did turn it in. We're just waiting for the grade." And I think that's more of like a Skyward IT question, than, you know, obviously something that the teacher would have to do. Is that something we could look into?
So again, there are some positive interactions and positive aspects of our current student information system, and then there are others. Our team has looked at that currently. It does not work. It cannot be done. There's been discussions of what will happen when our contract ends with the current student information system, and if we looked to a new one. I will go back to the team, but that, literally, this is a conversation that we have had almost every year, trying to make it better. And the way Skyward is built and the structure that we currently have in place does not allow for that to occur. But I know that Mr. Dragon, our CIO, is listening in, and so that he will go back to his team and see if there is anything that we can do around that. But the answer we've received under several CIOs is that we bought a product that is not allowing us to do that. And what we can do, though, is that we can communicate both with our families and with our teachers. I do believe the changes to this policy with the time is going to be a significant improvement to all of our families so that they are able to monitor more closely their child's grade, grades.
Thank you, Superintendent Vasquez. Member Byrd, do you have a follow-up?
No, that's fine. I appreciate the information.
Thank you. Member Felder?
Thank you. I remember so well when I was teaching with the grading, and I know this is archaic, but I'm just going to say it. Progress book, baby. That was truly the answer, because you could grade, you could take attendance, you gave comments, you could go back and forth with parents, letting them know. And it was clear what it was. And again, with regards to teachers, we set, we have a syllabus, and we know for the most part, the tests, the quizzes, the assignments we're gonna have for the nine weeks, for every nine weeks, because we have it broken down in units, and we're following our CRMs. So a teacher who is energetic may put all the assignments there to note, so they're already there. So all the student has to do and canvases, go in. The key to a lot of this, I believe, is that parents, along with legal guardians, when we have this wonderful thing that we call Teacher Introduction Day, like the first week of school or second week, when you come out, meet the teachers, open house. And I know it's hard, because if you're a parent and have two or three jobs, or if somebody can come to represent your family. It gives you a good idea. The teachers have on their, on their smart boards, and that's what I did. The entire year's courses, right there. You see exactly what we're gonna be doing. And you have to keep up. It's hard, but we want students to keep up. So parents and legal guardians gonna have to keep up and not wait to April asking about assignment that was not due, that was due in October, and you, and the teacher gave you until the first week in November to complete it, and you didn't do it. And then it's crazy. But it's extra. Many, most teachers, I know I did, and teachers that I know, they have flexibility in allowing students to make up work, because if you have a student that's sick, homebound, or they go on vacation or whatever, you do try, you, I don't think there's a teacher out here that wants children to fail. They will go through all kinds of changes to try to allow you to make up. Even administrators, I've had an administrator bring a kid in her office and go over the work. And she said, I said, "I'm not gonna do all that grading. That's just too much." She said, "I'll do the grading. Just give me the key." I said, "Okay, here's the key. You do the grading." But I'm just saying, we try to make sure our students don't fail. And I guess there's not a win-all grading system. I mean, it's just a, you're gonna find flaws in a lot of them. Even if they reevaluate what we're doing this year to try to look at something else, as Dr. Vasquez was saying. But I think the real key, and I'm, you know, at the beginning of a school year, as a parent, a legal guardian, we provide... we provide you with an excessive amount of order of teaching materials, what we're teaching, what we're doing, what your child is going to learn. And sometimes it can be tedious, but if you start off in the beginning, we can help you navigate through that. So you will not be, like, right now, there's some parents right now freaking out by graduation because there's, like, 12, 20 assignments that I'm going to do. You know how I know? Because I talk. I know exactly what's going on right now. They are freaking out because their children have not told them, they don't know how to navigate the computer, and then teachers are pressed down trying to get stuff done. So I guess we're just going to have to work with our parents, work with the teachers, because the thing of it is, it's hard enough to teach brand-new material to a mind who has never, ever been introduced to the concept. And it takes time, and once that concept has been learned, and then retention takes place, then you move to the next. So, and we only have 180 days. That ain't a long time. No, it's not. 180 days is not a long time to learn something new. So I, I'm with teachers, and I understand parents are crushed, but they have so much on their plate in terms of trying to teach a concept. And when that light bulb goes on, even if you start it in September and they finally get it in January, it's a happy time to celebrate. But I just need you to understand that it's not as easy as it looks. Teachers who are very good make it look easy, but this is not an easy task. So I don't know, Superintendent, maybe as your team goes back through some of the things and look at it, but I want parents and people that are listening to know, as a teacher on the other side of this dais, being a teacher, I know exactly what is going on and what teachers are doing. And how parents, even though they may not understand everything, they still want to, they still care, they still want their children to succeed. So know that I've seen, and I know that we're doing the best we can to help navigate this whole idea of learning, teaching, and moving on to the next level. We're doing the best we can to navigate this whole process. But I don't want to add any extra burden on teachers to try to do all this extra stuff, and there will be occurrences that come where a kid, outside of their fault, they have to go out of town for weeks and weeks because maybe the grandmother is, has a terminal illness, and they need to go to New York and spend the last two weeks with them. And they may have to go in May, and school is out in the end of May, and you've got to navigate that. That's more than a notion. So I just want to share that, and to let the teachers that are listening and parents alike, that I think this district goes over and aboard to try to make accommodations, to make sure students pass, they get the knowledge, and they pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Ferrant?
Just going back to Skyward really quick. Are we able to find out when that contract is up? I am sure nobody knows when that is, off the top of their head, but...
Yep, Mr. Pacheco's in the back, I think he can check for us and let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a quick question, and maybe we're not prepared to answer it yet, but on, in looking at absences, it used to be if you were suspended or had an unexcused absences, you weren't really allowed to make up the work?
That was my thought just about six weeks ago, and Mr. Moody corrected me. A few years ago, that was changed, and that is one of the things that we want to go back and revisit because it makes no distinction between excused and unexcused absences.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well, I see no further questions before the board, so I will turn it back to the superintendent, or are we just closing out? I'll do the last... Oh, yes, Member Byrd.
Sorry, Dr. Vasquez just said something that prompted me to make another comment, and I didn't have time to queue in. Can we also, if we're going to really look at the unexcused and excused for making up assignments, which I totally agree with, I again think that we need to look at a different way to excuse absences other than sending in written notes. Just saying, as a parent whose child has an ADHD child, who always stuff them in their backpack and then forgets to turn them in, it would be super helpful to have another way to get absences excused. Just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Byrd. Mrs. Bridges?
All right. Next steps will be to obtain input from the public on the proposed revisions at today's Rural Development Workshop, along with any additional guidance from the school board.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.